Good evening and welcome to the April 23, 2018 meeting of the Florissant City Council. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the blood of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it forms, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, please call the roll.
Parson, Syam, Lee, Jones, Egan, Caputa, Shildroth, Hanke, Pagano.
Here. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the meeting minutes of March 26 and executive meeting minutes of April 9, 2018? Hearing none. Councilman Shildroth moves to approve the minutes, seconded by Mr. Caputa. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The meeting minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council on any issue, not necessarily on the agenda this evening, for three minutes. Please remember that this is not a question and answer period, but if you'd like to stay after, we'd be happy to talk to you. So, the first...
I'm going to say Grobowski, but I don't know.
Okay. Don Grobowski?
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm like, I can't even, I can't read it, but I'm sorry.
Hang on, we'll handwrite it.
Good evening, Don.
Thank you.
1315 Delray. And that's fine, Jackie. And most of you, I know you all from, I had you in video somewhere along the line. In fact, when I'm done here, I'm going to go back to master control, but I did want to speak tonight real quick on something. Just a suggestion, it's something I think that needs to be done, that you might want to look at for a safety issue. Shackelford, when you're heading north with the new construction out, is going to make that graceful right-hand turn onto Lindsay. They've taken away the gentleman's property, quite a bit of his property, to make that nice sweeping 90-degree turn, which I'm thankful for. The issue that we, that I see happening there is, as I do all the time when I come home that way, I have a tendency to look to my left to make sure nobody else is merging in or cutting across, so that I can make the turn safely, even though there's a yield sign there. I can go right through there. I guarantee you, other people are not going to stop or slow down, they're going to go right through that now that it's a much more gentle turn. I would suggest a sign be placed that says something about hidden driveway or caution, slow turn, hidden driveway. I think this will be beneficial to that homeowner, it'll protect him, it'll also protect the city from a lawsuit. You know how crazy that gets, Mr. Hessel, how things can be, you know, turned around. So, I think just a simple sign on that one corner only, that's the only one that affects a person's driveway. And the way I look at it now, it's so close, there will be an accident there if something isn't done. So, that's all I had.
All right.
I'm going back to work now.
Good. The next item on the agenda is communications.
Letter dated April 19, 2018 from Karen McKay, expressing her appreciation for outgoing Councilman Tim Lee.
The next item on the agenda is old business. The first item under old business is second readings. We have bill number 9380. Councilman Hanke moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Parson. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 8376 from Five Aces Barbecue to CA 44 LLC, DBA Highway 67 Barbecue for the operation of a restaurant located at 1752 and 1754 New Florissant Road.
Councilman Hanke moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Shildroth. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 8376 from Five Aces Barbecue to CA 44 LLC, DBA Highway 67 Barbecue for the operation of a restaurant located at 1752 or 1754 New Florissant Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Hearing none. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Parson, Syam, Lee, Jones, Egan, Caputa, Shildroth, Hanke, Pagano.
Bill number 9380 passes and becomes ordinance number 8407. So, before we do the swearing-in of the new officials, Councilman Lee would like to take a moment to say a few things.
You have to turn my mic on.
You got, you're on. I told you I'm holding the hostage. If I wait this out, this won't happen.
I just want to say that it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the residents of Ward 1 in the city of Florissant for these past 15 years. I first want to thank the residents for allowing me to represent them and for their support and encouragement, several of you out there tonight. Next, I want to thank Karen Goodwin, the city clerk. She's been an invaluable source of reference for me from the day I was elected to just this week. So, it's my opinion that city clerks run cities, and you're probably one of the best. John Hessel, my friend, city attorney. We've become really good friends. You've been more than just a counselor, you've been a sounding board, you've been a rock for me. I've been able to call you and ask you questions, and you've helped me whenever it's needed, and I can't say thank you enough. I've served with 22 councilpersons in the past 15 years, but I have to say that the people sitting up here with me today are probably the best councils of the group that I've had the pleasure to work with. We've worked together for the betterment of the city of Florissant and have been able to become friends. I'll miss the social camaraderie with you and with our families. I encourage you to continue to make the hard decisions, and while you may not always agree on every issue, I know that you all have the best interests of the city at heart, and you'll represent the residents well. Thank you for your hard work and for your friendship. I served with Mayor Schneider for eight years as a councilperson, and now seven years as a mayor. And as many of you know, we've not always seen eye to eye on every issue, and we've had some rough times. But mayor, we've accomplished a lot of good things working together in the past 15 years, and I hope that you will continue to work with the council and continue to move the city forward. Next, I want to say thank you to our city employees. What a great group of people who are dedicated to our city. When there's a problem and the police are called, they're always there to help. If it snows, the salt is down and the snow is plowed. We have the finest park system in the region. The city functions quietly and efficiently in the background, and our residents have no idea all the hard work that goes into running their departments. I want to say thank you to my friends that have been a constant source of encouragement, and they've also been a sounding board when I needed event. They've also offered me their opinions and advice, sometimes when they weren't even solicited, but we did listen to them, and I appreciate them, and I appreciate them being here tonight. Last but certainly not least, I want to thank my wife Kathy. She was here since day one. She was here at the very first council meeting, and then she missed the next 340 points. But she's here tonight, and I want to thank you. Now you need to figure out what to do with me on Monday nights. To our new councilman, Andrew Harris, congratulations on a well-deserved victory. You prepared yourself and worked hard to get elected. Remember those people that put their faith and trust in you. Work hard for your residents. You have a great group of councilpeople up here, all of whom are knowledgeable and willing to help you. Seek them out, and if you have questions, and listen to their advice. We've spent a lot of time sitting and talking over the past year. If there's anything I could do for you, remember that I'm just a phone call away. Now, you're my councilperson, and I know that you'll do your best to represent me and serve our family and our residents. Again, thank you to the opportunity to serve this great city of Florissant. Thank you. Can I go home now?
No, you may not, but you may sit in the audience.
Oh, okay.
The next item on the agenda is the swearing-in of the newly-elected officials. Once we are finished, we will take a five-minute break to reset the city council members.
Okay.
And, you want to read the names?
I will do that.
Okay.
So, for Ward 1, Andrew Harris. Ward 3, Joseph Egan. Ward 5, Keith Shildroth. Ward 7, Jackie Pagano.
All right, so I'll go slow. Raise your right hand, please. Do you state your name, solemnly swear that you possess all the qualifications for the position of councilmember as prescribed by the Charter of the City of Florissant, that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and of the state of Missouri, and the charter and ordinances of the city of Florissant, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office? Congratulations.
Thank you. (applause) Come on up. No answer.
Thank you, Attorney General.
Thank you. I'm second to the last. The next item on the agenda is new business. Oh, yeah, we need to reseat, don't we? Oh, we have five minutes! I'm sorry. I'm sure we weren't on TV. Yeah. Okay. That was a quick one. I hate this part. I do too. I'm hoping I get it. And it wasn't. Do I need the whole five minutes? I will have to take pictures. I'm going to give a hug when it ends, or am I done?
There you go. Good job. Smart move. Take pictures of this guy.
Oh. Hello? (inaudible) The next item on the agenda is new business. Oh, yeah, we need to reseat, don't we? Oh, we have five minutes! I'm sorry. I'm sure we weren't on TV. Yeah. Okay. That was a quick one. I hate this part. I do too. I'm hoping I get it. And it wasn't. Do I need the whole five minutes? I will have to take pictures. Oh, that's true. I'm going to give a hug when it ends, or am I done?
There you go. Good job. Smart move. Take pictures of this guy.
Oh. Hello? (inaudible) The next item on the agenda is new business. Oh, yeah, we need to reseat, don't we? Oh, we have five minutes! I'm sorry. I'm sure we weren't on TV. Yeah. Okay. That was a quick one. I hate this part. I do too. I'm hoping I get it. And it wasn't. Do I need the whole five minutes? I will have to take pictures. Oh, that's true. I'm going to give a hug when it ends, or am I done?
There you go. Good job. Smart move. Take pictures of this guy.
Oh. Hello? (inaudible) The next item on the agenda is new business. Oh, yeah, we need to reseat, don't we? Oh, we have five minutes! I'm sorry. I'm sure we weren't on TV. Yeah. Okay. That was a quick one. I hate this part. I do too. I'm hoping I get it. And it wasn't. Do I need the whole five minutes? I will have to take pictures. Oh, that's true. I'm going to give a hug when it ends, or am I done?
There you go. Good job. Smart move. Take pictures of this guy.
Oh. Hello? (inaudible) The next item on the agenda is new business. Oh, yeah, we need to reseat, don't we? Oh, we have five minutes! I'm sorry. I'm sure we weren't on TV. Yeah. Okay. That was a quick one. I hate this part. I do too. I'm hoping I get it. And it wasn't. Do I need the whole five minutes? I will have to take pictures. Oh, that's true. I'm going to give a hug when it ends, or am I done?
There you go. Good job. Smart move. Take pictures of this guy.
Oh. Hello? (inaudible) The next item on the agenda is new business. Oh, yeah, we need to reseat, don't we? Oh, we have five minutes! I'm sorry. I'm sure we weren't on TV. Yeah. Okay. That was a quick one. I hate this part. I do too. I'm hoping I get it. And it wasn't. Do I need the whole five minutes? I will have to take pictures. Oh, that's true. I'm going to give a hug when it ends, or am I done?
There you go. Good job. Smart move. Take pictures of this guy.
Oh. Hello? (inaudible) The next item on the agenda is new business. Oh, yeah, we need to reseat, don't we? Oh, we have five minutes! I'm sorry. I'm sure we weren't on TV. Yeah. Okay. That was a quick one. I hate this part. I do too. I'm hoping I get it. And it wasn't. Do I need the whole five minutes? I will have to take pictures. Oh, that's true. I'm going to give a hug when it ends, or am I done?
There you go. Good job. Smart move. Take pictures of this guy.
Oh. Hello? (inaudible) The next item on the agenda is new business. Oh, yeah, we need to reseat, don't we? Oh, we have five minutes! I'm sorry. I'm sure we weren't on TV. Yeah. Okay. That was a quick one. I hate this part. I do too. I'm hoping I get it. And it wasn't. Do I need the whole five minutes? I will have to take pictures. Oh, that's true. I'm going to give a hug when it ends, or am I done?
There you go. Good job. Smart move. Take pictures of this guy.
Oh. Hello? (inaudible) The next item on the agenda is new business. Oh, yeah, we need to reseat, don't we? Oh, we have five minutes! I'm sorry. I'm sure we weren't on TV. Yeah. Okay. That was a quick one. I hate this part. I do too. I'm hoping I get it. And it wasn't. Do I need the whole five minutes? I will have to take pictures. Oh, that's true. I'm going to give a hug when it ends, or am I done?
There you go. Good job. Smart move. Take pictures of this guy.
Oh. Hello? (inaudible) The next item on the agenda is new business. Oh, yeah, we need to reseat, don't we? Oh, we have five minutes! I'm sorry. I'm sure we weren't on TV. Yeah. Okay. That was a quick one. I hate this part. I do too. I'm hoping I get it. And it wasn't. Do I need the whole five minutes? I will have to take pictures. Oh, that's true. I'm going to give a hug when it ends, or am I done?
There you go. Good job. Smart move. Take pictures of this guy.
Oh. Hello? (inaudible) The next item on the agenda is new business. Oh, yeah, we need to reseat, don't we? Oh, we have five minutes! I'm sorry. I'm sure we weren't on TV. Yeah. Okay. That was a quick one. I hate this part. I do too. I'm hoping I get it. And it wasn't. Do I need the whole five minutes? I will have to take pictures. Oh, that's true. I'm going to give a hug when it ends, or am I done?
There you go. Good job. Smart move. Take pictures of this guy.
Oh. Hello? (inaudible) The next item on the agenda is new business. Oh, yeah, we need to reseat, don't we? Oh, we have five minutes! I'm sorry. I'm sure we weren't on TV. Yeah. Okay. That was a quick one. I hate this part. I do too. I'm hoping I get it. And it wasn't. Do I need the whole five minutes? I will have to take pictures. Oh, that's true. I'm going to give a hug when it ends, or am I done?
There you go. Good job. Smart move. Take pictures of this guy.
Oh. Hello? (inaudible) The next item on the agenda is new business. Oh, yeah, we need to reseat, don't we? Oh, we have five minutes! I'm sorry. I'm sure we weren't on TV. Yeah. Okay. That was a quick one. I hate this part. I do too. I'm hoping I get it. And it wasn't. Do I need the whole five minutes? I will have to take pictures. Oh, that's true. I'm going to give a hug when it ends, or am I done?
There you go. Good job. Smart move. Take pictures of this guy.
Oh. Hello? (inaudible) The next item on the agenda is new business. Oh, yeah, we need to reseat, don't we? Oh, we have five minutes! I'm sorry. I'm sure we weren't on TV. Yeah. Okay. That was a quick one. I hate this part. I do too. I'm hoping I get it. And it wasn't. Do I need the whole five minutes? I will have to take pictures. Oh, that's true. I'm going to give a hug when it ends, or am I done?
There you go. Good job. Smart move. Take pictures of this guy.
Oh. Hello? (inaudible) The next item on the agenda is new business. Oh, yeah, we need to reseat, don't we? Oh, we have five minutes! I'm sorry. I'm sure we weren't on TV. Yeah. Okay. That was a quick one. I hate this part. I do too. I'm hoping I get it. And it wasn't. Do I need the whole five minutes? I will have to take pictures. Oh, that's true. I'm going to give a hug when it ends, or am I done?
There you go. Good job. Smart move. Take pictures of this guy.
Oh. Hello? (inaudible) The next item on the agenda is new business. Oh, yeah, we need to reseat, don't we? Oh, we have five minutes! I'm sorry. I'm sure we weren't on TV. Yeah. Okay. That was a quick one. I hate this part. I do too. I'm hoping I get it. And it wasn't. Do I need the whole five minutes? I will have to take pictures. Oh, that's true. I'm going to give a hug when it ends, or am I done?
There you go. Good job. Smart move. Take pictures of this guy.
Oh. Hello? (inaudible) The next item on the agenda is new business. Oh, yeah, we need to reseat, don't we? Oh, we have five minutes! I'm sorry. I'm sure we weren't on TV. Yeah. Okay. That was a quick one. I hate this part. I do too. I'm hoping I get it. And it wasn't. Do I need the whole five minutes? I will have to take pictures. Oh, that's true. I'm going to give a hug when it ends, or am I done?
There you go. Good job. Smart move. Take pictures of this guy.
Oh. Hello? (inaudible) The next item on the agenda is new business. The first item under new business is a resolution for Councilman Tim Lee. Resolution number 1002. I will move for a second. Oh, yeah, you want it, what? No. There we go.
Resolution to the Florissant City Council honoring Tim Lee for his 15 years of service as councilman from Ward 1.
I will move for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Egan. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Resolution to the Florissant City Council honoring Tim Lee for his 15 years of service as councilman for Board 1.
Councilman Caputa moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Roll call.
Oh, shoot, we're on the third reading, aren't we? See, Tim, I did this on purpose, just to screw up that Robert's Law, because I do it every, almost every time. Roll call.
Will do. Parson?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Resolution to the Florissant City Council honoring Tim Lee for his 15 years of service as councilman from Ward 1.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this? Come on up. Would you like to? There we go.
Good evening. Mark Schmidt, 1065 St. Anthony. I would be remiss if I didn't come up and say at least a few words. Having worked with Mr. Lee 14 years out of the 15 he was on the council, and like Mr. Lee said, we didn't always get along, but I always respected him. I always respected his opinions, and I always respected his research. He always did his homework, as well as you always know. He will be sorely missed with the city of Florissant. There was numerous things behind the scenes, numerous bills, numerous things that happened that were the result of Mr. Lee. Too many to even go into. But I think the council all knows, and I know the city knows, that there were a lot of things that he really did for the city. He always had his heart, was with the residents of the Florissant city. He enjoyed this city, he enjoyed working for this city. And I know he's going to enjoy his, I guess now official retirement, even more. So I wish him, his wife Kathy, his kids, his grandkids, the best, and enjoy yourself in your years to come. And don't be a stranger here. I got kicked out of my house on Monday nights. I had to do something. My wife wouldn't let me come back home on Monday nights. So, don't be a stranger. Please be around. These people really enjoy you and your company. Kathy, thanks for giving him to the city for 15 years. They enjoyed it, and I know he did. So, thanks. Tim?
Thank you.
You know, it takes a lot to get me back in this council chamber, all of you. Tim Lee is a big reason to be here tonight. You know, I talked to Karen, and she said, "Why don't you come up and read your letter?" And she said, "I can't get through that resolution without tears. I brought the tissue, Karen." Oh, she has hers. And I said, "Well, I don't know if I'm going to be able to do that. I don't think I can read the whole letter." But I did put down a few notes, and I said, "You know, I'll just kind of highlight a few of them." You know, when Tim became the councilman in 2003, after Susan Gerling decided that with her lupus, she wasn't able to run again, we all said, "Oh, my gosh, Susan Gerling's not going to run. What are we going to do? How are we going to fill the shoes of Susan Gerling?" She had worked for the city, she was a phenomenal councilwoman. What are we going to do? And then this man who was on one of the, you know, one of the commissions, came up and said, "I think I'm going to run." And he did, and he won. And he came into the council chamber, and he sat right there on Ward 1 seat, and I looked down at him, and I went, "Hmm." You know, I don't know anything about this guy, but he must be okay, because he got elected by the people in his ward, so he must be a pretty good guy. Within a matter of a few weeks, he was a pretty good guy. We all figured it out pretty fast. You know, and we had all these wonderful years that we went through budgets that were pretty tough. We went through 2008 together. I served with Tim from 2003 to 2012, and those nine years were tough years. We had some pretty tough restraints on our money, we had some pretty tough restraints on things that were going on in the city, but we still survived. We had a man that came onto this council who had this expertise with finance. He had this councilwoman down here in Ward 7 who liked to ask questions. She asked a lot of questions, and she got a lot of people that said, "You need to just kind of be quiet." But I was the only female on the council at the time, so it was a little tough trying to get my answer. As you know, Jackie, you figured that out yourself. Anyway, Tim, you have some wonderful leadership qualities, and you never stood alone by yourself. You were a team player. He was a team player. He didn't do anything by himself. He always made phone calls, he always talked to the entire council, he made phone calls to the city clerk. As he mentioned, he made phone calls to the city attorney, he made phone calls to the mayor, and he asked questions. He wanted to make sure everything that he did was for the citizens of Florissant, to make it the best place for not only the citizens, but for the employees that worked here. The employees, if you look at the budget, 87% of that budget goes to the employees to run this city. You all know that. You've worked on that budget. Where's Waldo? You figured it out, haven't you? You'll figure it out, Andrew. And let me tell you, Tim Lee figured it out. He would work day and night to get that budget where it was something that could be passed, and it was something that this council could present as law every year. So I want to give him kudos for the work that he did, day and night. This is not a part-time job, and you all know that. It may say in our charter it's a part-time job, but it's a full-time, 40, 60-hour job, and you all know that. So, Tim, you know, they say that people do come into our lives, and there's some of them that teach us all kinds of lessons, and some of them make us a better person. Tim Lee made me a better person. He made me a better councilwoman. He took time to calm me down when I would get the hair on the back of my neck up, and he'd say, "Calm down, Karen, because you're going to take time to make the right vote that's going to make Florissant a better person, a better place to live." But Tim Lee made Florissant a better place to live. And that's all I can say, guys, and I'm going to miss it. But Andrew, you have some big shoes to fill, and I know you're going to do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim, we love you, and we're going to miss you. Guys, keep Florissant going, because I've lived here almost, I hate to say it, 70 years, and I'm not leaving. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I too can say all kinds of great and wonderful things about Tim Lee. You all automatically know that. My big concern, and congratulations, Andy, my big concern is Kathy, because now she's stuck on Monday nights with Tim at home. Although I do have an option, I can give him a spot probably on Tuesday night with the opening of the Hazelwood School District Board. And so, if I get a little, if I can get, you know, like a motion from the council in a second, maybe we can work that out. Thank you very much. Tim's been a wonderful friend for many of us, for many, many years, as he is with all of you guys. He never shared any of your secrets. God knows we tried to get him to, but he never did. So, wonderful guy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Parson?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes. Okay, now it's our turn. I don't know, when your lights start going on, since I can't keep order of them anyway. We'll just go, yes, he is, huh?
Harris was first.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, the newbie. Mr. Harris was first. So there you go. It's all yours.
I won't be too long, but I just want to say thanks to Tim and Kathy. You know, I always felt comfortable in conversations with you all, and learning, and...
I won't be too long, but I just wanna say thanks to Tim and Kathy. You know, I always felt comfortable in conversations with you all and learning and, you know, Karen McKay said that there are big shoes to fill and you're not the only person to say that. I knocked on a lot of doors and I had a lot of people tell me that. And a lot of people say great things about our councilman, Lee. And I agree, I got to know him doing work, you know, over the last four or five years actually, in the neighborhood. And Tim was always helpful, always fair, measured, you know, even things were, you know, sometimes frustrating. Like, "I want information, I wanna know." But it, the history, kind of always starting with the history. This is how it was and just helping me to understand that. So I'm looking forward to making a contribution here. And I love this community before I started this process, but I love it even more now. So I'm looking forward to us moving forward and just being a great, continue to be a great place to live and continue to discover ways to make that better. So thank you, Tim and Kathy, and also a lot of people in the audience too. Just gotten to know a lot of, a lot of great Ward One people and beyond, went to a lot of committee meetings and this, we just have so many great people participating in different committees and I'm learning from you all. So I can, I plan to continue to do that. So thank you for this opportunity to sit here. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yep. Tim, it was a pleasure. I've learned a lot from you, paid more attention than you think I did. But I think the biggest thing that stuck out to me over these years that I've served with you is when you ask the same question two or three times, you're gonna get a different answer every time. And you've told me that several times and I've paid attention to that. And it's made me ask this extra question or so, but no, you're right, you get a different answer every time you ask the same question. It's definitely stuck out to me. But I hope you enjoy your retirement, Tim, and I'm sure some of us will still be reaching out to you saying, "What's your opinion on this?" And getting into those numbers with you. Thanks, buddy.
Mr. Egan?
Thank you, Madam President. This is a bittersweet evening for me personally. I think it's neat that we see the wheels of government continue to turn. We have a stalwart on the council leaving and a new fellow coming in to take his place. I'm very happy for Tim that he's decided to go into retirement and that he gets to leave on his own terms. That's really important, I think, in this business. I think it's a testament, Tim, to you that you have our comrades that served in the past have come up this evening with Mark and with Karen and those other committee leaders in the audience and I think it's a testament to your service. I think, I'd like to think we became pretty good friends over this last seven years and I learned a ton from you. You know where every penny is. You know every rule. We'd sometimes joke how we flubbed one of Robert's rules and you were always good on catching the flubs and we'd talk about them later. But that just goes to show what attention to detail that you have and it's something as I've served up here, I continue to work on to get better. We're gonna miss you up here. I'm gonna personally miss the conversations we've had and you'll hear the council people say, "We don't always get along, we don't always agree." And I think that's good. I think that's good government. I think that the arguments that we have had and discussions we've had have been behind the scenes. It may make for lousy TV on Monday nights, but I think it makes for good government. I wanna thank you. I love you, my friend. Godspeed.
Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, Tim, it's been a hell of a ride. And we're all gonna miss you, my friend. You mean a lot to the city and you are a true statement and that's what we need more of these days. You do, we have, we have had major disagreements through the years, but like Mr. Egan said, that's all part of government. That's good when we have these disagreements and that's what compromise is. And I think we ought to keep Mr. Lee and use him as a consultant for about six months, so, and, but you will be missed, my friend, and it has been an honor to serve with you. I have learned a lot and I'm sure everybody up on this dais has learned a lot from you. And I know everything that you said have came from your heart and you mean well. And good luck to your endeavors in the future. And Kathy? Thank you. I know Mr. Jay Russell, when we talked about years ago about politics, he says, "If you don't have your spouse's support, you might as well not run for any office, public office around." So, and I see that many years you had your spouse's support, so, and that's good. And like I said, you will truly be missed, my friend. Thank you.
Mr. Syam?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanna echo pretty much what everybody in this room is saying to thank Mr. Lee for his 15 years of service to the city and to congratulate him and wish him a happy retirement. He was, he was a gift to the council. His knowledge of, his knowledge of finance and accounting were very valuable to us. Just to name one example specifically that nobody has mentioned yet, the golf course in my ward, when I was first sworn in a few years ago, was bleeding hundreds of thousands of dollars every year and it was in a very unsustainable position and we didn't know if we'd be able to keep the golf course, we didn't know if we'd be able to keep it open. And along with me and Mr. Shildroth, Mr. Lee served on the golf committee and Mr. Lee did a great deal of work to help turn things around and to make it fiscally sustainable. And so the fact that we still have a golf course, the fact that it's still open, the fact that people are still using it, we owe in large part to you for that. So, thank you for all of that and again, thanks for, you know, it was great serving with you. Thanks for all of your service and congratulations and happy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parson?
Thank you, Madam President. Tim, I know we haven't known each other for a long period of time, but I just wanna sincerely thank you for your service to the city of Florissant. Ever since I was elected to be on the council, I was, have been able to talk to you. I know there's been, been some issues that would come up and I needed to know the history behind what is going on and I could always rely on you to provide that history and give me a kind of a summation of, of the issues and I really appreciate that and I really appreciate your help. So, enjoy your retirement, buddy. You deserve it.
Mr. Hanky?
Yeah, Tim. What can we say that hasn't been said, but I'll tell you this, I came from, all of us by definition sitting on this council, we're elected here. So we have fairly strong personalities, we got opinions, we state them strongly. I came from a strong labor background and you came from a more of a business background and you and I had some great discussions. And I think, I echo a little bit what Mr. Egan said, by the fact that there's nine of us up here, this council is a representative of blending of these nine opinions that we put together and come up with an answer. And I know you and I start out sometimes on different sides of an issue, but you've taught me a lot and hopefully we blended some opinions throughout the time and that's why there's nine of us up here. Thanks, Tim, for everything you've done for me and for the city.
Mr. Shildroth?
Thank you, Madam President. Public service is a lonely, challenging, and sometimes underappreciated way of helping your community and residents. Growing up, Tim Lee watched his father, Bob Lee, serve as a policeman for the city of St. Louis for many years. The elder Mr. Lee was one of the first officers in the Canine Division and he served the city proudly. Tim Lee also had a distinguished career as the Assistant Collector of Revenue for St. Louis County for over 30 years. And it's, and it is with full pride, excuse me, it is with pride that I offer these comments with full disclosure. Yes, Mr. Lee hired me to work for the Collector of Revenue and I had the privilege of watching him work with taxpayers and alongside revenue staff to solve numerous problems that come up with this thankless job. Mr. Lee's tenure on the Florissant City Council is a perfect example of how a politician works for his residents and residents outside his ward. His work converting the city to a single trash hauler with discounts for residents and seniors, boosting our recycling program with two different administrations, and more recently his work with Proposition S to replace and repair our streets and infrastructure, and as Mr. Syam said, heading up the golf committee to ensure more accountability improvements at our golf course, are three of his many accomplishments that few can boast. I would like to thank Tim's wife Kathy and his entire family for their sacrifice and patience during his years on the city council. Tim, I know you won't be a stranger and I'm sure we'll be seeing you with your work at Florissant Old Town Partners, the Greater North County Chamber of Commerce, and the Fall Festival. Tim, it's been a great serving with you and it's been a productive and educating ride. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, okay, Tim, I'm gonna go next, although they've said pretty well everything in all my, doesn't look so good, but it is four pages. He needs four pages handwritten and now I'm like, there was so much more, I couldn't add it, but it would've went in the book. So here it goes. "Tim, they say people come into your life for a reason. Sometimes you never figure out why, but with you, Tim, it was easy. The night I was sworn in, I remember looking down the dais and seeing you and John Gribb, two big men with years of experience and knowledge and thinking, 'What am I getting myself into?'" "But you both, along with the others, were so welcoming and so generous with your knowledge. I will be forever grateful." "Tim, you have shown your love of Florissant by always being involved, whether Old Town Partners, Chamber of Commerce, being on several council committees and jumping right in, even when a council member decides to have a picnic to bring the community together. You and Kathy jumped right in to help me." "You have also been a great teacher to me and mentor. You have shown me that whenever things get tough and messy, to put my big girl pants on and remain calm, which at times has been a challenge, and now I hear that you did the same for Ms. McKay." Yeah. And you also taught me to be the bigger person. "You have been through many challenges representing this city over the past 15 years, but have always confronted them with dignity and grace. For that, I admire you. You have always had the city and the residents' best interest in mind. Tim, you were always there when someone had a question, never making them feel foolish or unintelligent, but always explaining the answer in a way all could understand it." "I could go on and on, but I will just share a few things others may, others may not know about you. You are generous, you are kind, you are loyal, and you are encouraging. You are great, you are great at boosting your, someone's confidence, giving you the pat on the back or a hug when you need it, or 'You did a good job tonight, I'm proud of you,' is what you would say. Tim is the best one to share food with, because when you go out, you can order anything you want and he just eats half. So, he's also very good at splitting that beer evenly and precisely after being taught by Mr. Gribb on how to do that and how to end the night. And he, along with Kathy, are probably the best hot dog wrappers in Florissant. And there's one thing that Elvis, Tim, and I share, a special connection. We share the same birthday, not the same year, but the same birthday. So, with all that being said to you, I say to you, 'Thank you, Tim, for serving this city for 15 years. I know that you will still be, still be a part of it and involved, because that is the person you are. And Kathy is gonna need her alone times, so, but most of all, thank you. Thank you for being my friend. So, I love you, friend.'" Turning to Mr. Hassel.
Oh, thank you. Tim, as you know, I've had the honor of serving as a city attorney for, what, 30 years now? That's a long time. And the only reason I mention that is that I was able to spend the last 15 years with you and it's been a pleasure, but I can also add, Tim, without hesitation or reservation, that it has been a true privilege to work with you, but an even bigger blessing to be able to call you my friend. As several people have mentioned already, as we go through life, we meet a lot of different people. We learn from some and some, very few, become friends, something that I truly cherish. And from my standpoint, our friendship developed really in proportion to the admiration and respect that I have for you as an elected leader, but more importantly, as a person. I can personally attest to the fact that you are a tireless public servant of the people and a strong advocate for the city. As you well know, you would call me or email me anytime, any day, frequently on weekends, and they usually started with, "I hope this is an easy question," knowing that it wasn't easy, that's why you were asking it. It was a tough question, but they were always appropriate and the discussions that we had were open, honest, and always with respect. To me, that's the true measure of a person and you have always exhibited professionalism, kindness, thoughtfulness. That is the, in my opinion, the shining example of how all of us should treat each other. So, you stand head and shoulders above the rest of us. As everyone mentioned, I'm happy for you and for Kathy, but as you know, we will miss you, I will miss you quite a bit. The good part is that I'm sure that our friendship will continue. So all I can do is say thank you for everything that you've done and repeat that it has been an absolute privilege to work with you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yeah, Tim, as you alluded to, we've often had a lot of tugs of war, but whenever we were pulling in the same direction, I don't think we, I think we always prevailed. So best of luck to you and enjoy your family.
Would you all like to come through a little bit? And we will present this. You wanna come down?
I'm gonna read, read the resolution.
If all of Karen reads?
I'll read. "Resolution of the Florissant City Council honoring Tim Lee for his 15 years of service as councilman from Ward One. Whereas Councilman Lee, first elected in April of 2003, was reelected for four additional terms, serving the Florissant community for 15 years, representing Ward One on the city council. Whereas Tim Lee was elected to serve as council president and vice president twice by his peers. Whereas Tim Lee worked tirelessly to represent his ward and the citizens of Florissant on the difficult issues that often face the city council. Whereas Tim Lee was responsive to his residents through regular ward meetings and daily email, call and work requests through the administration. Whereas before he was elected, Tim served seven years on the Florissant Board of Adjustment and Minimum Building Standards Board of Appeals. Whereas Tim Lee served as a city county, as a St. Louis County Assistant Collector of Revenue, retired in 2012 after 31 years of service and spent much of his time working for the betterment of the city of Florissant. Whereas Tim Lee was instrumental in the formation of the Florissant Home Buyers Assistance Program and the Florissant Property Acquisition Program. He chaired the golf subcommittee, which resulted in many improvements in the aesthetics and financial condition of the course. Whereas Tim Lee was at the forefront of legislation and passage by the voters for Proposition S to improve and repair and replace the streets of Florissant. Whereas Tim Lee was also at the forefront of legislation for the use of single trash hauler and resulted in savings for the residents, discounts for the seniors, and improved recycling program. Whereas Councilman Lee also served as an officer of Florissant Old Town Partners and vice president of the Florissant Parks Foundation. He was also active in the North County Chamber of Commerce and served as a regular member of the Fall Festival Committee. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Florissant, speaking for itself and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Florissant, that the city council go publicly on record to express its sincere and heartfelt thank you to Councilman Lee for a job well done." for a job well done."
Okay. Well, the next item on the agenda is public hearings. We have public hearing number eighteen zero four zero one five.
In accordance with Section 405, 310 of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at nine fifty-five Rue St. Francois on Monday, April twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, at seven thirty P.M. on the following proposition. To authorize a special use permit to Erica Sharp, DBA Feel Sharp Massage Therapy, to allow for the operation of massage therapy business in the HB Historic Business District for the property located at five twenty-five Rue St. Francois. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling eight three nine seven six three zero or TDD eight three nine five one four two.
Is the petitioner present?
Yeah.
You wanna come on up? You may have to move that mic so we can hear you. There you go. State your name and...
Oh, Erica Sharp, with Feel Sharp Massage Therapy.
Okay. You wanna tell us a little bit about where you're going, what you're doing?
Mm-hmm. So, I specialize in sports massage, relaxation massage, deep tissue massage. I've worked at Massage Envy and physical therapy clinics.
Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, Erica, welcome. Are you gonna have yourself only as a masseuse, or is there... You have other people working for you?
So, just be me in the office space, yes.
So, you'll be the actual one doing the massages?
Mm-hmm, yes.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Egan?
Thank you. Good evening, Eric. Welcome to Florissant.
Oh, wait a minute. I turned...
Good evening, Erica, and welcome to Florissant. What hours do you plan on operating your business?
From between ten and seven.
Ten A.M. and seven P.M.?
Mm-hmm.
Is that seven days a week, or is that Monday through Friday, or...
Monday to Saturday.
Okay. And are you certified in massage therapy?
Yes.
Okay. What are your certifications?
The certification in... Well, I'm certified in sports massage, medical massage, and then you have to get licensed in massage therapy.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. That's all I have. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Hanky?
Yeah, you're in my ward, in fact, you're right around the corner from my house. Welcome. I haven't talked to you yet.
Thank you.
Welcome. I wanted to know what your hours were. Will those be set hours, or is it by appointment, or you will just be there to throw those hours?
It'll be by appointment only, but pretty much set hours from ten to seven, but by appointment only.
By appointment only?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so it's not a walk-in type thing, it's a...
No, yeah. Yeah, just be by appointment.
Because I know there was another one up in the eight oh one building. Mary Wallace had one up there, in the eight oh one building, which is up straight. I think she has since retired. But anyway, welcome. Welcome to Florissant.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, I'm glad you picked our city for your new business, so welcome. I know we do have another one, I think it's Turtle, correct?
Oh, I think it's... Another massage. I think Elvis did it.
But one thing I always poke at the new businesses on is our trash issues that we have in our city, and I'm hoping that you can put waste baskets at your entrance and exits of your building. So, when people are coming in or leaving, that they're putting it in the wastebasket instead of setting it out on the curb, or throwing it in the parking lot, or stuff like that. But like I said, I do poke at everybody about that. We are getting a little bit more stringent, because it seems like more kids these days do not use them trashcans, and it makes our city look terrible over a period of time.
I agree.
So, if you could please do that for us, we would appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
We can do that.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment? Hearing none. Councilman Hanky moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, and the public hearing is closed. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Andrew here.
Next item on the agenda is board appointments. Mayor?
Yeah, wish to reappoint the following individuals to the Emergency Management Commission: Antonio Gis from Ward Two, Eric Thomas from Ward One, and Daniel Cunningham from Ward Eight.
Councilman Egan moves to approve the mayor's appointment, seconded by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The appointments are made. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is request. Councilman Cyan moves to approve a full liquor-by-the-drink license for Privilege Lounge LLC for the property located at one twenty-nine Flower Valley Shopping Center, seconded by Mr. Hanky. Roll call, please.
Parsons?
Yes.
Cyan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes. The liquor license is approved. Councilman Hanky moves to approve a full liquor-by-the-drink license... Why do we have...
It's a different one.
The Privilege Lounge.
No. The Privilege Lounge was the first one. Get rid of that and go to here.
I'm sorry. There we go. Councilman Hanky moves to approve a full liquor-by-the-drink license to...
It's CA four four LLC.
CA four four LLC, DBA Highway Sixty-seven Barbecue, located at seventeen fifty-two, seventeen fifty-four New Florissant Road, seconded by Mr. Shildroth. Roll call, please.
Parsons?
Yes.
Cyan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes. The liquor license is approved. The next item on the agenda is first readings. We have bill number ninety-three eighty-one.
Ordinance to rezone for Quattro Florissant LLC, DBA Aspen Dental Mod Pizza for the property located at thirty-one twenty-five North Highway Sixty-seven, from B three extensive commercial district to B five planned commercial district to allow for the construction of a new tenant building.
Bill number ninety-three eighty-two.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to Erica Sharp, DBA Feel Sharp Massage Therapy, to allow for the operation of massage therapy business in an HB Historic Business District for the property located at five twenty-five Rue St. Francois.
Bill number ninety-three eighty-three.
An ordinance providing for a boundary adjustment between Saint Louis County and the city of Florissant.
Councilman Shildroth moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance providing for a boundary adjustment between Saint Louis County and the city of Florissant.
Councilman Caputa moves for a third reading, seconded by myself. Roll call, please.
Parsons?
Yes.
Cyan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Eric.
Caputa?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
An ordinance providing for a boundary adjustment between Saint Louis County and the city of Florissant.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Hearing none. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Parsons?
Yes.
Cyan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes. Bill number ninety-three eighty-three passes and becomes ordinance number eighty-four oh eight. Next, I will move to change the May twenty-eighth meeting to May twenty-ninth due to the Memorial Day holiday, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is council announcements. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, first thing, I would like to congratulate Andrew Harris, Councilman Andrew Harris. Good job. Looking forward to working with you. And like Mr. Lee said, you have a very, very well council up here, and we're happy to work with you. Got any questions, don't hesitate to call. I believe you have all of our numbers, so don't hesitate to call us if you need any questions answered, or have any questions. If you're a gun owner, make sure keep your guns locked up, your firearms locked up, do not keep them in your vehicle. Please join your neighborhood watch program. Florissant has a very good neighborhood watch program, and it does show with our crime. Other than that, I think I will... That'd be it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I wanna welcome Andrew, and like Jeff said, any one of us here, Andrew, we will give you every information that we have, but you never stop learning in this position, so we don't know everything, that's for sure. I wanna give a shout-out to team, our food pantry, you guys, there's always somebody hungry morning, noon, or night, some extra canned goods, some extra change in the car, got a big fat check run down to twenty or something. Do something for team, you guys, please. I know spring's here, you know, we're gonna start being out on our streets, looking at the grasses, making sure they're cut, and our neighborhoods are cleaned up, so please take time to take care of your business at your residence. We are starting to get more and more strict on that, because more and more people are starting to fall off, and we gotta go by and remind them that we wanna keep an upkeep in our city. Another thing I'd like to say is Shackelford has three more lanes to asphalt. They did not work today because of the rain. In the next coming days, and probably in the next week, they will finish that up, and that'll be a very nice thing. I'm glad our gentleman that runs one of our cameras came up out of Ward Two and mentioned that about the hidden driveway there on Lindsay Lane, which is a very good point. I don't hope that that turns into a speedway, though, because I do think when that opens up, I am gonna put our speed cameras down there, because it will be, I think, a speedway. I hate to say that, but nope. Anything else that any residents need? We're a very proactive council. Please reach out to us. Don't sit home and kick the kitchen table. Reach out, pick up the phone, or email one of us, and if you can't catch one of us, catch another one of us, you guys. We all work very good together, but like I said, we try to be as proactive as possible. The more feedback we get off those streets, the more we can get done. Thanks.
Mr. Cyan?
Thank you, Madam President. Just briefly, I would like to give a heartfelt thanks to the residents of Ward Nine for choosing me again to serve and represent you here in Florissant City Hall. It is no kidding one of the biggest honors of my lifetime. I appreciate it a lot, and no one knows what the future holds, but regardless of how long I'm here, I would like to just say that my one hope is that I'll leave Ward Nine and the city in general in better condition than when I founded in 2015, so... And also, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Harris, and I'm looking forward to serving with you here on the council, and just like all the others, anytime you need anything, just don't hesitate to reach out, I'm here to help as well, so thank you.
Mr. Parsons?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I wanna congra... Give congratulations to Andrew Harris for winning his election, and I look forward to working with you, and I'm also relieved that you'll be taking on the burden of the weather. Not I don't have to worry about that anymore, so I think I was batting a thousand here, so you've got some things you've got to work out here, okay? But, you know, things... I look forward to working with you, and I know we're gonna do some good things for the city of Florissant. Other thing is, I want everybody to remember their Florissant Five. Once again, your Florissant Five, you wanna make sure you know five of your nearest neighbors on your street, or around the corner, or something like that. Make sure that you're taking care of your neighborhood, and you love your neighborhood. If you have any interest in being part of the Neighborhood Watch, I encourage people to be a part of that also, and I'm excited for the Valley of Flowers. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
So, I just wanna thank the community again for the opportunity and the responsibility to serve in this way. I do not take this lightly, and I look forward to learning from all of you. We'll take you up on all your offers to learn, and I feel like already, you've all reached out to me, and I feel like this process has worked. So, besides getting to know the community very well, all of you, I could tell it's a team effort, and so I know there are challenges, but I also see a lot of opportunity, so that's exciting for me. And I think I wouldn't wanna do it if there wasn't an opportunity, you know, to just do great things with you all, so I feel confident that we're gonna do that. There's a lot of pockets of community out there, like Empower North County. Shout-out to Empower North County and all the people with that. There's some great things going on there. There's soccer camps this summer coming up, bringing back sort of just a high level of amenity for families in sports, so that's going on. And then also, the Noco Rocks group. I know that's come up a couple times, and there's a garden out here in front, so that season's picking up, and there's a lot of folks there that I met through Noco Rocks, spreading kindness and sort of also development, too, for businesses to just be able to promote development there, and so that's been kind of an out-of-the-box kind of opportunity that has been exciting. And then my family, I didn't get to really say anything before they left, but my wife and my daughter, I mean, just because I was gone so much for a few months, and y'all know what that's like, really, and you keep pushing, and you want it so bad, but the sacrifice, you know, that they made, too, during that time, and the encouragement was amazing. So, thank you, Lindsay and Adely, and my parents were here, and I know my in-laws in Kansas City are watching online, so hi to them. And then the weather, so I wish I had something, I knew that was coming, I knew the weather was coming, so thank you for that, but my sister, one of her best friends, and sort of just like family to us, she was the... Became the first meteorologist in charge in Saint Louis recently, in August, and so I will get Sally, who is the meteorologist in charge, the first woman in Saint Louis to hold that position, and I'll consult with her, and I'll bring back some weather. When she did an interview with the news about that, she says she brings the cold, 'cause she came from South Dakota before she came here, but thank you again for all of your words, kind words, and I appreciate it.
She better bring the sun for Valley of Flowers, or she's gonna have some money, happy people. Mr. Hanky?
Yeah, congratulations, Andrew, and welcome. Meaning from the bottom of my heart, if you need anything, pick up a phone call, we'll get some cell phone numbers going here in a minute. Also, I was gonna talk about the weather, but you're already aware of it, I thought that might be a little surprise for you tonight. You've got big shoes to fill, excuse me, you're filling Mr. Lee's shoes on the council, but you're filling Mr. Parsons', you're relieving Mr. Parsons', and he did an outstanding job on the weather throughout his... When he wore the mantle of being responsible for it. But speaking of the Valley of Flowers, which is your first big test, and that's a week and a half away from us, and that's a big one. What I'd like to say, and I've said it before, folks, we're having a big party in a week and a half from now, it's the Valley of Flowers Festival. If you're having a party at your house or a neighborhood, whatever, you spruce up, you clean up, make it look good. We're gonna have people from all over the region come to this Valley of Flowers Festival. Let's put on our best face, let's clean up, cut the grass, plant the flowers, whatever needs to be done. Let's put on our best face for our party that will come up here in a week and a half. That's it.
Mr. Egan?
Thank you, Madam President. Andrew, welcome aboard. It's going to be a fun ride, just as it's been with Mr. Lee and the other council people who have come before you and I. Weather's getting nice out right now, I've noticed especially this weekend, hopefully spring is going to be here. When you're out riding around, be careful. There are so many people riding around, just... They're driving fast, so if you're walking or jogging, have your head up, pay attention, and if you're driving, slow down. Slow down, pay attention, you'll get there. Don't ruin someone's life or your own life by... Because it's nice when you just wanna drive fast. That's all I got.
All right.
Call in any favors you can for the weather, because brother, you blow it, you're in trouble. I would like to thank the residents for, of Ward 5, for once again re-electing me. It's an honor and a privilege to serve the city and the residents of Ward 5. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to welcome you, Andrew. It will be a fun ride, believe me. It's like a roller coaster, but in the end, you'll, you'll have fun. So, and I'd also like to thank the residents of Ward 7 for re-electing me. It is an honor to serve you and I'm, I'm looking forward to good things to come for our ward. Mayor?
Yeah, I, welcome, Andrew, and thank you, Robert. You did a great job with the weather, unprecedented, I think. I think you did bat a thousand. So you got, you got a big challenge ahead of you, Andrew, because we need good weather for these events and we're very much tired of the cold and rain. We had 400 seniors attend the Fourth Annual Aging My Way Resource Fair at the Egan Center. Very appreciated, very well attended. I would thank all the vendors that were there to help our seniors. And then on the 12th, we had our 2018 Tree City USA by Arbor Day. We had it at our disc golf course, at a beautiful disc golf course at Dunigan Park, and we had the children from Commons Lane School there along with Mr. Parsons. And yesterday was kind of a special event in Ward 2, and I'm going to try to pronounce this, I think I can, is that, is that, their organization on Lindsay is the Wat Phrasritanarium. It's a Thai Buddhist temple. And with us there yesterday was the Council General of Thailand, and I'd like to, he reminded me that this is the 200th anniversary of our oldest ally. Thailand, the Kingdom of Thailand, is the United States' oldest ally, starting in 1818. And during the European colonial rule of that part of the world, Thailand was the only independent, non-colonialized country. So it was very, it was a great honor and it was great food over there on Lindsay Lane yesterday. Every year, hundreds of Florissant residents join, many Thai residents that come from several states to enjoy the Thai New Year. We're going to have, you know, we've, we're talking about the Valley of Flowers coming up on May 4th, 5th, and 6th, and as Mr. Hanky alluded to, we, we want to try to get, encourage everybody to do the cleanup spruce up. And we, we just had, this Saturday, we're going to have our fourth event, actually fifth, I think. We had the Trash Bash to help clean up Sunset. We had the Electronic Recycling at Saint Ferdinand last Saturday. We had the Document shredding at Saint Ferdinand. Meridian offered a complimentary yard waste pickup this month. And then Saturday, we're going to have the Grodd Sale at the ice rink from 9 to 12. And then overlapping that, we're going to have a touch of truck. We're going to have a lot of large equipment, fire trucks, police vehicles, dump trucks, where children and people of all ages can get up close and personal with a large vehicle. And that's going to be from 11 to 1, also at the Egan Center parking lot. And this year's Valley of Flowers, of course, the theme is the Moonies 100th Anniversary. And so it's a, it's a very fun, uplifting theme, and I'm looking forward to the best Valley of Flowers ever. And I'd also like to congratulate Chief Tim Lowry. He was nominated and he received the Public Service Leadership Award from North County Incorporated, and that will be presented to him on, at a breakfast that North County Incorporated will host on May 18. Congratulations, Chief Lowry. And also Phase 1 at Mannion Park, the amenities to Mannion are completed, and we're about to start Phase 2, which will install a special handicap accessible restroom to complement the amenities that we've already started with at Mannion. And with that, I'll see everybody at the Valley of Flowers. Thanks.
The next regular meeting for the city council will be on Monday, May 14, 2018. Tonight, there will be a short open meeting at 9 PM this evening to consider one ordinance that was not included on tonight's agenda. Councilman Harris moves to adjourn this regular meeting, seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending.